I am Representative Lori Stone, and I serve Michigan's 28th House District, which includes the west side of Warren and all of Centerline. When talking to residents during my campaign in 2018, and still to this day, one of the top concerns I heard was the unaffordable rates for auto insurance that only seemed to increase. I'm no stranger to high auto insurance rates that many of the residents of our state have had to pay. I share the frustration when the renewal comes in the mail, and you have to consider your options for shopping around for better rates. Most of us are dependent on our cars to get to and from work, to pick up our groceries, or to drop kids off at school. Yet, year after year, these high rates have forced far too many of our families to decide to have to pay car insurance or put food on the table or purchase medicine and other things our families need. The 100th Legislature, along with Governor Whitmer, tackled the no-fault auto insurance reform earlier this year. It has not been a simple or quick process. In June, the governor signed Senate Bill 1 into law, which made sweeping reforms to our auto no-fault insurance system. The Legislature has been working on auto insurance reform for several years now. However, when the legislation was first introduced, it was rushed to the House floor. We received it at about 7:00 PM in the evening. I spent roughly the next four hours reading and trying to digest the changes. I still have some reservations about the law. I will highlight some of those concerns, and I still think they have some work that needs to be done on them. Since then, many constituents continue to contact my office with questions and concerns about the law. That's why I decided to host this auto insurance town hall to kind of get some information out there, help answer questions you have, and hopefully get the word out in the community. I also invited a couple colleagues who have been working closely with me on the auto no-fault insurance reform to share some of their experience and input. So let me introduce State Representative Donna Lesinski from the 52nd House District, representing Moeshaun County. Representative Lesinski is the Democratic Vice Chairperson of the Select Committee on Auto Insurance Reform this term. And she has been a leader on this issue. Also with us tonight is State Representative Rachel Hood from the 76th House District, representing portions of Grand Rapids. And I appreciate you guys coming out of your way to come and share your experience in our community. I've also invited some community partners to add their voice, experience, and unique perspectives to this panel. Stephen Sinus is partner at Sinus Drumm Law, and he represents people who have been injured or harmed by negligence and wrongdoing. He's also an adjunct professor of the Michigan No-Fault Auto Insurance Law at Michigan State University's College of Law. And he is also the Associate Legal Counsel to the Coalition Protecting Auto No-Fault, or CPAN. Tim Costa is the neurorestorative provider. We also have a correspondent survivor to share their experience, as well as a care provider. Some very important perspectives to have when considering your options. I'd like to start with the timeline. Because while the law was signed back in June, a lot of people thought, okay, tomorrow, I'm going to call my auto insurance, and I'm going to get my discount. I'm going to get my deal. However, we know that laws take a while to implement. There's a lot of pieces in place, from auto insurance to government departments, that have to make sure the pieces are implemented correctly to be successful. Well, let me start with immediate effect. So, once the law was signed back in June, there are several things that people have been looking for that are now in law and protected and will continue to look out for. So, one is the fraud authority, which was instituted by Governor Snyder to address reports of fraud. But it was signed into statute with this law, meaning that it will continue to investigate claims. And you can file complaints online via email, and there will be a manned phone line. That is a rare thing, to pick up the phone and get another person to answer your questions and to file a report. And this is a very important cost control method. Fraud is one of the issues that is impacting the costs of insurance. Another piece is the independent medical examiner, who reviews the treatments prescribed by claimants, doctors, to make determinations for insurance companies relating to claims. Language was added to ensure examiners are knowledgeable and experienced, that they meet medical specialties of the claimant and prescribing doctor. Most of their income must come from other sources than insurance companies. And this is intended to allow for the actual independent evaluation. So, no longer is a podiatrist going to be used to evaluate traumatic brain injury, or...
Hold on a minute. Sorry. Woke me up.
So, we have, hopefully, removed some of the bias when looking at that. A big issue that I hear about will come in news and from people are the Michigan catastrophic claims authority and its transparency. You know, there's lots of speculation about how much money is out there. Are they hoarding it? Should it be rebated? What's going on with that? And part of that concern comes from a lack of transparency. So, there are oversight bodies, but how come we don't know? How do we know how much is in there? Where is it going? What is it used for? And when do we get another rebate? Right? So, this law makes the MCCA subject to routine audits every three years, which will be reported to the state legislature, as well as being available online to the general public in general language. So, not just something, an actuarial table that it takes a professional to analyze. You should be getting a report every three years that you can go on and look at, and they should give you a reasonable explanation of how the funds are being utilized, how funded is the authority. And, just so you know, upon taking office, Governor Whitmer, hearing this from voters, asked for an audit to be taken place. So she has a baseline knowledge, and that information was just shared out this week, if I remember. Next is reentry penalty elimination. So, we know there are some communities and some individuals that had such astronomical insurance fees that they just have not been able to sustain them. And when you have to make certain choices on when their budget or money is going, that they've allowed their insurance to last. And we don't think that you should be penalized. We want everyone to be covered. And so, it's important that we don't throw fines and fees in the way that could be a barrier to entering the insurance market again. We have until January 1st of 2022 to get everyone back onto insurance. So if you're hearing people in the community, please let them know that there is a pathway to get back into the market. July 21st, 2020 is the date everyone's waiting for. That's when the actual rate reductions are going to be available as part of policies. July 1st, 2021 is when insurance plans will then have a cost-saving measure with a new medical fee schedule. And so, hopefully, we'll have to see what that looks like. But it should keep rates consistent. So that, you know, when you go in for a CAT scan, it costs $1,600. And if you have a car accident, it's not all of a sudden costing $6,000. So, hopefully, that will be a cost-saving measure as well. I'm going to hand it off to Reverend Lesinski to talk about some of those cost savings that you're looking forward to. Thank you. Oh, whoops, I grabbed your paper instead of mine. So, again, my name is Donna Lesinski. So, I actually grew up at 24 in Dequindre, so just north of here. That's not my alarm going off. I'm going to stand up so I can see everybody's faces. So, yeah, so I'm the select, the vice chair. I'm a Democrat, so a vice chair with Republicans and minorities, the highest rank a Democrat can achieve. So I jokingly say I'm the ranking Democrat on there. It sounds a little bit more important. On the Select Committee to Reduce Auto Insurance Rates. So, I am very excited. I'm in my second term, and these are two first-term members here, Representative Hood and Representative Stone. And it's really a pleasure and an honor to serve with both of them. As we came out with the auto reform, rates are going to go down. But what we want to be very aware of is that the rate is going down because the coverage is changing. It's not like you're getting the same jacket at Macy's, but you're getting it at 30% off. You're having to pick a different jacket, and that jacket costs 30% less. So when we're looking across the rate reductions, what we want to be very aware of is as the rate goes down, so does the coverage. So you're actually, or previously in Michigan, we had, we all bought unlimited coverage. When we bought our auto insurance coverage, everything for injuries was covered. Now, you have to make the decision in Michigan, thinking ahead. If you knew tomorrow you were going to get in a car accident, which coverage would you like to have? All right? We never know if my, you know, drive home tonight is the night I'm going to get in a car accident or when it's going to happen. But what we need to be aware of then is thinking about that. If I get in a car accident tomorrow, what coverage do I want to have? So we will still be able to purchase our unlimited option.
When is this going to happen?
Next July. July, July of 2020, you will be able to make these choices. So the insurance companies, if you call to get a new insurance policy after July 1st, after this summer, the insurance company will offer you all these different choices. If you just choose to renew what you have, you will just renew what you have. So if yours expires in a year from now, yep, you can always call early. You can call in July and say, I'd like to change my insurance. So insurance contracts always allow you to change your policy partways through. So these choices will be available in July. If you continue to maintain the unlimited coverage, the idea that if you get in a car accident, you will be cared for until your injury has reached its conclusion. Which means that if it's a broken leg and it takes 12 weeks to recover, you have around 12 weeks of coverage. If it is a traumatic brain injury or catastrophic physical injury, you will be covered for your lifetime. So that's what unlimited coverage means. Now, the next coverage at $500,000 says that you will be covered... I'm sorry, let me make this quieter. I put it on in case we needed something. The $500,000 coverage means that you will be covered until you have reached the $500,000 limit for how much it costs to care for your injury, and so on. So then there's a $250,000 option. There is a $50,000 option if you have Medicaid. So if you have Medicaid, then you can choose a $50,000 option. And it will result in the one line on your bill. This will not change the line for collision. It won't change the line for property damage. It will change the personal injury protection line will go down by 45%. So 10%, 20%, 35%, and 45% reduction. Now, there is this option that you could say, hey, I have a Blue Cross Blue Shield plan, and so I'm just going to totally opt out of having any personal injury protection. So if you have a qualified health plan, and your health plan covers auto accidents... Not all of us in Michigan, our health plans do not cover auto accidents in Michigan. Companies that self-insure, Ford, GM, Meyer, they don't cover auto accidents. So this is something you're going to be very, very careful with. You could completely opt out. So that means if you have an accident where you break your leg, your personal insurance will care for it. However, if because you broke your leg, you lose your job, and you lose your health insurance, no one will be covering anything. Okay? You will not have any coverage under your auto insurance policy for an accident where you've been injured. If it causes you, if you choose to totally opt out and you lose your job because of the injury, you will not have any healthcare coverage for that injury. Okay? So we just have to be very aware as we're looking at these choices and we go to make these choices. It's been 40 years that we have been covered in auto accidents as we make these choices. We have to be very, very careful. So...
Medicare?
Well, so Medicaid, so Medicare is, you can't, that opt-out, one of the plans that functions as an opt-out option is Medicare. So Medicare would be a qualified insurer. You would have, yeah, you'd have to have Medicare Parts A and B. But it does qualify as a healthcare coverage that allows you to completely opt out. But we have to remember that Medicare covers what Medicare covers. And if your injuries are more extensive, then the type of coverage that Medicare covers is if you have a traumatic brain injury and need specialized therapies, and that's not covered by Medicare, you will be left completely uncovered after an accident. Thank you. Yes?
Did you say at the beginning that right now, we have to have unlimited? It's a law?
Right now, yes. For the last 40 years, we have been an auto no-fault state, which means every policy simply covered everything.
Right.
And so that's, yeah. So that's where we did a couple of things. So your insurance policy covered every injury up to $500,000. And then after that, you went into the catastrophic claims group, and that's that MCCA line on your health insurance.
And the reason that goes up is when they have too many claims and the fund gets depreciated, or...
So how it works is that, let's say, I always hate doing this, good Catholic girl. God forbid, the three in this front row got injured in an accident. The fee for the MCCA that year says, well, we think it's going to take $100,000 to get you to your injury. We think it's going to take $1,005,000 for yours and $3,000,000 for yours. And what the MCCA fee is, it looks back a year and says for everybody who was injured in the year prior, how much is it going to cost to take care of them through the end of their injury? And that is the fee that's assessed. So the MCCA fee that's assessed every year covers the previous year's accident. So depending on how that looks back.
And it's been going up every year?
It has gone up and down. So it has gone, six years ago, we all got a refund. It went down. The last two years, it's gone up. It just went down to $100. It just went down by $88. Will be the new fee we're set, so it will be $88 lower. So it goes up and down depending on the injuries, the projected costs of those injuries. But, your statement is absolutely true. We have all felt that it has been going up at a rate that has not been commensurate with those injuries, which is why Governor Whitmer ordered the audit as soon as she took office, because she felt some of those projected costs for injuries were not right and appropriate at that point, or there was something going on there. So you're, both things are true at once. All right. So, some of the things that are different in the auto insurance law now. There is the mandate that for eight years, that there will have to be a minimum reduction for those different, for those reductions in coverage, there has to be a minimum reduction, as we talked about, the 10%, 20%, 30%, 35%, and 45% must continue for eight years. It also created a rate approval process. Right now, insurance companies, they would file their rate, and they got to use it the next day. Now, their rate has to be approved by the state before they can use it. It also started prohibiting in law several non-driving factors in ratemaking. So gender, marriage, marital status, those type things are no longer allowed to be used in ratemaking. It established a permanent anti-fraud unit, something we have needed for a long time. That fund we were just talking about, where the Catastrophic Care Fund has increased transparency. And there are also regulations to protect... So when you're a patient, again, that idea that somebody gets to decide whether or not your claim should be paid, or you're allowed to get the coverage that your doctor says you need, and that puts a place at a process that more closely ties doctors that are related to that injury to it. All right, so for the next one?
I have a question.
Yeah, please. That's a baby on a shirt.
The third one that you have, does that include what people call redlining?
Let's go back one slide. So this is, by the way, thank you very much for doing that. So, kinda.
Because that...
So, redlining is the idea that there were, and there are, certain parts that have had, you know, redlining in the traditional sense had to do with loan making and the federal government having a policy that you will not give loans to people of color unless they live within this area. And if you live in this area, only white people get to get a loan. Right? That's redlining. And the federal government literally had maps that had red lines around areas and prohibited people of color from getting home loans in those areas. When we're talking about redlining here in terms of insurance, essentially those same areas were experiencing for the same driver. Two drivers, each of you have a speeding ticket, but you live in one zip code and you live in the other. Because you live in this zip code, you're literally going to pay five times as much as you are. Same driver, same characteristics, but you live in a zip code and you are paying five times as much. So, that is not allowed any longer. So rates cannot vary by zip code. But, there's always a but, which is why we're still working and talking about this issue. Territories are allowed. As long as the territory is not a zip code, insurance can still rate by territory. So all three of us, together, have had discussions with the new Director of Insurance to say, okay, how are you going to differentiate a territory from a zip code? And so she's heading on the insurers when they draw their territories, they have to overlay it onto a zip code map. And the second part, which is the most important part, they have to demonstrate, this is kind of three big words in a row, a rational relationship to risk to define that territory. So they have to actually be able to say that it's rational, which means it makes sense that we drew this area because there's a difference in risk between these two areas in order for us to change the rate. So the rate has to have a rational relationship to risk. And so, it's a kinda answer on the redlining. We really, all three of us, really wish, it had frankly just been eliminated. Absolutely. Okay. So, this is really, really small, and I get a little bit vain about wearing my glasses. So if you don't mind, I'm going to look down instead of looking up. What, thank you. What this is showing here is what has changed and what hasn't changed. So again, personal injury protection net line that's been the highest for a lot of us on our policy went from unlimited to where now. You have to make the choice. If you're in an accident tomorrow, how much coverage do you want to have when that happens? Property protection didn't change, and I'm going to steal the line from one of my colleagues up here. Personal property damage is still at $1,000,000. So we are still protecting our property. Well, now, we will be protecting our property better than we protect our people. Residual liability insurance. So that means if you hit or run over something, then it used to be 2040, now it'll be 5100. Again, things cost more to replace, but people cost more to fix, too. But that's going to go up as well. So property, we're good. We're good, we're protected. And then your other coverage, collision insurance comprehensive, those aren't touched by personal injury. So the type of car you have, how much it costs if you get in a fender bender, those aren't impacted by this law. And then the Michigan Catastrophic Claims Association, theoretically, because there's going to be a new fee schedule in a year and a half that will change how fees are paid, we will likely see some of those costs go down in the future. So we'll see how that works out. All right? Yeah?
I've heard that this plan has been characterized as like those percentages that you had in the beginning, and the MCCA has promises, not laws.
No, it's a law. So we'll go back. So we'll go back. I'll explain how it goes. So if you'll go back to the percentages.
Yeah.
So that, let's take the $500,000. That's 20, oh, take the unlimited, that's the easiest. The 10% rate reduction. The way the law is written is that across the state of Michigan, let's say, only this row right here, it's only, it's only the six of us who choose unlimited, and there's a 10% rate reduction? There has to be 10% rate reduction on average across the six of us. So that might mean I get a 30% rate reduction, and you get a 2%. And you get a 10%, right? Where it's supposed to be, you get 15, you get 1, and you get 1. But on average, across the six of us, there's 10%. So that's how the law is written. There will be a reduction, but it will be very hard to pinpoint unless you happen to be the person who gets exactly 10% reduction. It's on average, all the people in the state who choose unlimited, it will be 10% lower. On average, people who choose $500,000 in coverage will be twenty percent lower than what they used to pay for unlimited. But again, it's a reduction in coverage, so you're darn well right, your rate better go down. So that's what it is, a thirty-five percent rate reduction from what you used to pay for unlimited on average. But can, can anyone guarantee that you will get thirty-five percent exactly? No, the law is written as an average across the state.
Who decided on these?
Who decided on these? Yeah, the Republican.
No, who decides who gets two percent, who gets eight percent, who gets...
Yeah, absolutely, because that's a really good question. So, um, there's a class of people, uh, and professions called an actuary. Folks who are just number whizzes. I mean, these are those kids that are doing division in kindergarten, right? Longhand, long division in kindergarten. Believe it or not, we don't have a pay scale high enough in state government to pay actuaries what they're paid in private industry. So in the state of Michigan, we have one actuary on staff who manages contract actuaries who do this kind of work. So again, and the three of us have had eyeball-to-eyeball conversations with the director of insurance saying, we're not comfortable with this. We feel that we should, you know, we should be doing this work. What, um, she has told us is that to figure out whether or not you're getting ten, twenty, or thirty-five, the actuaries have created an algorithm and a formula that's gonna take all the rates paid by all of the people. Then all the insurance companies are gonna file their new rates for next July, and then they're gonna feed it into this algorithm and formula and see if it spits out that this has created these discounts. And the rates won't be approved unless the algorithm and the formula spit out that on average across Michigan with the new rate for them filed and the anticipated number of people who are gonna choose each bucket will result in these rates. Clear as mud?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I don't wanna keep...
So if you pay, you're gonna pay nine dollars probably for the unlimited.
Well, the unlimited, you'll pay what you paid today minus ten percent.
But you're not guaranteed that ten percent.
Someone will get ten percent.
Yeah, someone, but you're not...
Yeah. Someone might get fifteen and someone might get five, but on average, it should be ten percent. But here's the kicker, and, and this is, this is the tough one. Is that, remember how we just talked about the MCCA fee going down? So the hundred and eighty-eight dollars for the MCCA fee, let's take the, the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar one there. Because you're not choosing unlimited, you don't have to pay that anymore. Because you never get to take, you'll never be the person who's injured that year who goes into the pool. So you don't have to pay the MCCA fee anymore because you've totally lost that unlimited coverage. They get to count that towards your discount.
That's a big percentage.
And that'll be a big percentage of it right there, yeah.
So they're doing away with, with the person with the fault. Like say someone runs a red light, hits you broadside, your insurance company's gotta cover everything.
So here's the trick, and I actually, I, yeah, I, I did learn something the other day. I was very frustrated because, so right now, if I got the unlimited coverage right now, I would think it's the same as today. And if I ran, I gotta pick somebody else to run into because I think I've injured you twice already. And so if I run into you and, uh, it's determined that, um, you chose the fifty thousand dollar coverage and I chose the unlimited. Both of us are very injured, okay? So my unlimited is going to cover me. Your fifty thousand dollars is now going to cover you. So now, let's say I was zero percent at fault. So my unlimited covers me, I'm fine. Your fifty thousand dollars, you run out, eh, whatever, you were at fault. Now, let's flip it. I'm a hundred percent at fault. I have unlimited, my unlimited covers me. You have fifty thousand, your fifty thousand covers you up to fifty, and then you have to sue me. Well, I had unlimited for me, so I'm all good. And I got a roof tea and a house that's underwater, which means you're not getting anything out of me when you sue me. Okay?
And your insurance rates will go up because you got in the accident, whether it was your fault or not.
Probably, but I've got a roof tea and a, and a house underwater. And so if my insurance rate goes up and I've already got a catastrophic injury, I'm just worried about staying alive. So, um, you know, so that's, so there's going to be other lines of insurance that you're gonna wanna be thinking about. Underinsured motorist, you know, if you hit someone with fifty thousand, that's who you're, you are, you are going to be at risk. Well, I'm gonna be at risk now of fault because it's what used to happen. It felt like if I got in an accident, I was a hundred percent at fault. My unlimited handled the whole thing. It didn't. My unlimited only handled me, but you had unlimited too, and you had unlimited too, and you had unlimited. So it felt like your unlimited covered everything, but it didn't. Your unlimited, this is a really hard thing for me to come to grips with. My unlimited always just covered me, it's just that everybody else had unlimited too. And so that's where the promise, that's what auto no-fault was. We didn't start suing over fault. We didn't take the assets that each other had, had encountered in a lifetime. And we have to remember that sliding on black ice and bumping into someone is fault. We have to remember that, you know, someone coming up in your blind spot and you're not seeing them and moving over a bit is fault. We have to remember that what now we call accidents are now called at-fault. Okay? Eighteen, twenty, twenty-two-year-old sons, can you imagine how many at-faults I've had in the last seven years? Okay? That were covered by unlimited and other folks were covered by unlimited. They were, no, never any injuries, but, but lots of bumps and scrapes. Okay, so I think I'm wrapping up. So, um, yeah, that's where we are. We're gonna have plenty of questions, and at the time, you started to eat into that, but I'd love to hand this over to Representative Hood.
Thank you, Representative Hood. Okay, so just a fair warning. I'm not as adept at this yet as my colleague, Representative Hood, um, along with Representative Stone. This is, uh, my first year, but unfortunately, I have a little bit of personal experience to, um, bring to the discussion. So, um, my job is to talk about unanticipated uninsured impacts. While most drivers are insured, we know that there are still a number of people who are not insured for whatever reasons, usually because they simply just can't afford, uh, uh, policies for their, their vehicles. The Assigned Claims Plan, or the ACP, is the safety net created for individuals who are not legally required to be covered by an auto insurance policy. However, it comes with limitations, only offering two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of coverage as of July one, twenty-twenty, which is this important date that we all have to remember when considering our insurance plans and our coverage. The ACP is the last resort for, for individuals injured in motor vehicle accidents where no other insurance policies are available for the individual to find coverage. So those fight, folks might be, uh, people who use, um, excuse me, people who use ACP are not drivers or owners of non-insured vehicles. Rather, they are folks who are involved in an accident with those drivers and end up being injured. This might be kids who are in a vehicle, who are dependent on their parents' coverage. So as a parent of young children, I have to be much more thoughtful about piling up a whole bunch of kids in my vehicle and taking them to a field trip, for instance. I really don't feel comfortable in doing that unless I have an additional million dollars of coverage. Um, what happens if you don't have auto insurance? And what happens if you don't own or drive a car? Pedestrians. If you're out for a walk or a run and you're involved in an accident, you will be put on the Assigned Claims Plan. Bicyclists. I'm a bicyclist. I like to ride fifty, hundred-mile rides, um, when I can. That's obviously not happening as much now. Um, and if you're a bicyclist, you're out, you get hit by a vehicle, um, you go to the ACP if you're not otherwise covered by an auto insurance plan. Um, and this was the case, uh, several years ago, about fourteen years ago, when my husband and I, uh, decided to go down to one vehicle. And we weren't quite married yet, but we were saving up for our wedding. We were both living and working pretty close, uh, to each other. He was able to ride his bike for the spring, summer, and fall seasons. We were able to save on a car payment and car insurance and still, you know, get to work and be good employees. So, uh, during that time, as I mentioned, we were not married. Um, so he was not covered under my auto insurance plan. When riding his bike to work one morning, uh, he was hit by a vehicle. Uh, the vehicle, um, caused his bike to twist under him. He was flown several, uh, several feet into a side street. And, um, he destroyed his fibias, tibia, his malleus, which is your heel bone, uh, several bones in his feet. And, uh, were it not for ACP coverage, um, and, uh, the Catastrophic Claims Fund, uh, we would be, would have been bankrupted. Um, or his parents would have had to come and cover those costs. Um, thankfully, uh, because of auto no-fault and the ACP, those costs were largely covered. Um, we, uh, he lost his job subsequently because he couldn't perform his work duties any longer. He wasn't able to, to walk until he had several surgeries, um, to repair. We easily exceeded two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. There's no question about that. And as young people, this, this cost would have been a burden for the rest of our lives without auto no-fault. Um, thankfully, because we had those resources, he was able to get the care that he needed. Um, it took about, uh, three years for him to be fully back on his feet, several surgeries later. And today, um, he is doing great. He has a little bit of pain, but he works really hard as a brewer. We own a business. He's an employer with, uh, with forty employees. Um, and, you know, we have, we've had a lot of opportunities, like allowing me to run profits and, um, and different, different things like that. Um, but this, you know, one simple accident like that, for which he was not at fault, um, could have destroyed multiple lives. And, um, it's something to think about as we move forward to discuss how we improve SB one. Leaves a lot of us vulnerable, is my point. While, um...
On the first line. I say for somebody who's having grandchildren, like, uh, in an accident, somebody is having that too.
So I think the default is the, um...
If they're here, you're automobile insurance.
Their parents' auto insurance. If the parents are for whatever reason not covered, or they have limited coverage, then I think it triggers the health plan. The health plan may be limited. Um, and then, you know, once you exceed, uh, the available resources, um, your family's going into Medicaid and, uh, you will be, you know, essentially bankrupted by the healthcare costs, um, depending on the, you know, the depth of the inju, injury, et cetera. So that's why I mentioned, you know, as a parent, and a parent who, you know, you casually pick up other people's kids, right? Well, you know, now I either have to have a conversation with the other kid's parents. Oh, you know, hey, how much are you insured? Right? Imagine that. Um, but proactively, um, if we can afford it, you know, the way we would have to deal with that is getting another rider, an additional million-dollar rider to protect us, um, from a suit, from another parent who, you know, rightfully so, is just looking for their child to be cared for, um, and, and to recover, um, at whatever cost. Uh, we would all want for that, right? So, um, I'll share another part of the story. A couple of years after my husband's accident, my sister-in-law was in a catastrophic accident in California. She lived in the mountains. Um, a semi-truck driver had decided to turn around on a two-lane highway at the curb on the side of a mountain. And, uh, it was an icy night, dark. She, um, tried to hit her brakes but slid right into the vehicle. Um, multiple fractures, uh, of both her fib or tib, her, um, sorry, I'm not a medical professional, so, thighs. Um, and, uh, her hip, a couple of ribs, um, shoulder, and, uh, and her face were, um, were all fractured. Um, she was in intensive care in Reno, airlifted off the side of this mountain. Um, after her immediate physical recovery, uh, she then had to go into a two-year-long process to sue to, uh, gain back the, the, the financial cost of the accident and, uh, and, and injury as well. Luckily, that particular semi-truck driver was part of a larger national company, and so there were resources, uh, to back up that suit. And after two years of fighting in the courts and all of the, you know, harassment and trouble of, you know, working with lawyers and having to deal with, uh, all of these delayed healthcare payments because they obviously didn't have the cash to pay for everything right away. Um, uh, they, they finally settled and, uh, they were, they were compensated and compensated well. But there was a significant chance that that semi-truck driver could have been an independent contractor with little or no wealth behind his or her, um, company. And, uh, she could have, uh, uh, been responsible for all of those healthcare bills for her recovery. Um, so, you know, this is the, the benefit, the, the, um, incredible, like, safety net that, that auto no-fault insurance was for the state of Michigan, and it is not in other states.
That's what I was gonna say. We are the only state, the other forty-nine states do not have no-fault. So had she had that accident in Michigan, she wouldn't have had to have sued or anything.
That's right, although that dynamic changes now, depending on all of these, you know, various factors that we now have to navigate. And I personally feel, and I voted no on this bill, because to me, I don't care if it's two hundred dollars and it went up to two-hundred-and-twenty dollars. My ability to rest easy at night that if my family were to have a cat, a member of my family were to be catastrophically injured, that it would be covered and that we would, um, have the resources that we need to be able to address their care over the course of their lifetime, I'll pay, I'll pay a lot of money for that, personally. Um, and I can't say that for everyone. I understand that, um, that rates are astronomical in some of these communities where, uh, redlining has occurred. Um, so I have sensitivity and empathy to that. But we, we just lost this peace of mind and this assurance of our health and our well-being moving forward to save likely less than a hundred dollars each.